Welcome everybody here today.
We're in place anyway.
A day that has been a long time coming. People probably thought you would never see this day. Enjoy this earth because it's the last time you can see the grass grown in this location. If we're good, if we're real good, we'll have a present. I want to thank you for coming and making your head work. They'll be here in a few minutes, just don't roll your sleeves up, get your thing going. I want to this time I'd like Mr. Sawyer to come forward and give the prayer as loud as a heart and the sun is shining, it's a blessed day here in Currituck. I'd like him to come and give his own case.
Let's pray. Yeah, it's David, let's pray. Father, we thank you that you invested in people, that you saw our need and you sent your son and you provided for us salvation. As the Father, we see this as an investment in the people of Currituck County. As we come here today, Lord, we bless your name. We thank you for placing us in such a good land, Lord, a perfect place, Lord God. We thank you, Lord God, for how you protected our county in the years past, Lord. And we pray for protection over the workers of this site. Lord, we pray the people that will come for years to come. We see the presence of the cause, Lord, we acknowledge you first. We thank you, Lord God, that you blessed us. Father, again, we give you thanks and praise today. Blessed all that's said here today, Lord, join us in all that we do in this county of Currituck. We ask Jesus you to be king over our land, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good evening, I'd like to call the order of the Monday, November 1st meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I believe our invocation and pledge is going to be led by Boy Scout Troop 169 sponsored by the Moyoc Ruertan Club. I ask everyone please stand. Let us pray. 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 Let us pray.[553.22][553.22][S01. We have a couple of people that I missed. Over here. Yes, and Ms. Streeter, the chairman of the Board of Education. Thank you. And then we also have Ms. Diane Bray, the director of the senior center, and she does a great job. You should run for office, she's very popular. So, as we get ready to break ground, I'd like to ask Mr. Billy George to come up here because he's been instrumental in the whole process and we wouldn't be here today without your help, so come on up here with the groundbreaking.
He's never seen a shovel though.
We're going to show you what it's like to be at Currituck. We're going to put you on a shovel.
He's the chairman of the board.
Well, he's... We've had a lot of shovels, so all of us, let's get up here and let's do it.
What we'd like to do is actually, we have three different groundbreaking, we'd like to invite our Y partners up first, then we'd like to have, we've got several of our senior citizens advisory boards here, the commissioners would like to do a groundbreaking with them, and then we want to do a groundbreaking with our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, so we'll do that in kind of order. Also before we do this, there's a couple of people that I'd like to thank because this project is unique to us and how we put this together. It truly was a partnership of a lot of different folks. We invited, unfortunately the hospital can't be with us, but our hospital actually can have a presence in our facility often to make services for our community. We've been working very closely with the state, our master gardeners have been critical in putting together this project, and we want to thank their effort. We want to thank, I want to personally thank Holly and Ben off of our planning staff who have scrutinized this plan and really have made this a better design today than it was when we started. And special thanks to the civil engineering group who actually listened to our planning staff and kind of took them outside their comfort zone, and I think we have a facility that will be uniquely for us, and certainly a blessing for Currituck. I want to thank those folks and with that, our Y partners up here.
Let me, I'll tell you what, let's bring in Karen and Sean and Mark for them. Yeah, come on up.
I know, Harry's never seen a shovel.
Come on, there. Come on, there's a shovel right here. This is with Carolina back there. Let's do this at the count of three, how about that? All right, ready? One, two, three.
Anybody who thinks, the members from our senior advisory board and Diane, if y'all in here, we'd like y'all to come up please.
Jason, you got your group member.
Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Jason, you got your group member. Two more shovels and one more, so come on, seniors, come on, need three more of you. Three more seniors, come on.
Come on, Eric, come on, Eric. Come on up here and give one of these shovels. Yeah, come on. Come on up here and give one.
She's got her bird on Karen.
Come on up here, you stay right up here with us. Come on, come on, come on right here, come on right here, you can help me with my shovel. Come on right here, you grab that and hold that shovel.
On three, one, two, three, smile.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Recreation and Recreation Advisory Board.
Thanks.
Come on, Pat, a lot of school kids are going to be using the Y. Grab a hold of the shovel right there. Let everybody, they cover all the shovels. Need one more, one more shovel. Where's the manager? David Sawyer, come on up here. Come on, David. Come on, come on. I won't make you use a city scooter. I won't, I won't make you use it, just prop on it. Right down there. Just lean on it like you do at home. All right, on three, one, two, three. I'm putting it in, thank you, David. I know you owe me now, don't you? Thanks, everybody, for coming out and watching the trail.
Now you're whacking.
Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I believe our invocation and pledge is going to be led by Boy Scout Troop 169 sponsored by the Moyoc Ruertan Club. I ask everyone please stand.
Dear Lord, as we gather for this meeting, give us the use of your gift of peace and understanding that we may approach the matters we must handle with sincere and just hearts. May you watch over and guide our tongues that we may not hurt other friends with whom we at work with for the betterment of our community and our country. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please draw me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item is approval of agenda. We have one addition, which is the waiving of the tipping fee for Diane Johnson to the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
A motion for approval with the amendment. And second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose. Item two is public comment. I have one person signed up, Ms. Marion Gilbert. Please state your name and address and limit comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Marion Gilbert, 107 Fargo Court. I'm just calling or coming up here tonight to report back on our mow-in Moyoc project. That was a task that we took care of this Saturday. There's a lot more that needs to be done out there. Janet, a couple of folks came by and honked and waved at us, so thank you for just letting us know that you came by checking on us. But I'd like to thank Catherine and Tom Grimes, the manager and owner of CAT Services and Cleaning for the use of their equipment, Moyoc Baptist Church for the parking lot facilities, and also Eldon Miller and Sons for the use of their facilities. In addition to that, Lena Morris, Brandon Cockrell, and of course, my youngest brother, Chris Gilbert, who participated in that. In doing this project, the grading of the property, I can understand now why DOT hasn't done a whole lot in that area, because I guess maybe when the wastewater project was put in, there's lots of uneven areas and also the slope of the ditch is very jagged. So, we did what we could with what we had as far as equipment wise, but just to let you know that it looks a little better, there's still lots of work that needs to be done out of there and not going to give up on that project, we're going to continue. I had some nice conversations with lots of people that day that stopped by and wanted to know what we were doing and how they could get involved, so hopefully that'll give us a good start on some community involvement in mow-in Moyoc, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak that didn't sign up this time? Mr. Kohler?
I apologize for not signing up. Bob Kohler, 145 Sound Shore Drive. The reason I'm here tonight is I'm bringing the Rural Health Initiative members here to speak to the commissioners, but in addition to that, remember November 11th is Veterans Day and we will have a ceremony at Veterans Park as we do every year and it'll be at 11:00 in Coin Jock. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, would Mr. Kohler mind giving a report on the moving wall?
I'm sure he wouldn't.
Well, let's say this, let's start with the last day, which was a closing event. There were over 500 people showed up, I didn't know where they all came from because it was a work day, so I think they slipped out, but came down. But that was, it was very impressive. There were a lot of things we had to do, our rifle squad from 6060 in Slisby City, at the last minute, we're unable to attend with the sheriff's department and some of our legionnaires, we still have a rifle squad to have the 21-gun salute. The last day brought us a couple of busloads in the morning of schoolchildren, and the Friday before, we had about six busloads of children coming from all over Currituck County. We had a total of between 5,000 and 6,000 people attended that period of time from Wednesday, or I should say Thursday at 1:00 until we closed down on Monday. I'll just give you one little thing that touched me very much. We were taking down the wall on Monday, the west wall was already down, we're working on the east wall, and a gentleman drove up and I walked over to him and I said, you know, we're taking the wall down, can I help you? He said, yeah, he says, I'm looking for four Marines. I said, well, let me get the dictionary, let me get my directory quickly and see if their names happen to be on the wall and if they're on the east wall, we'll go find them. So, we quickly looked through there, three of the four were not there, the fourth one was there, just happened to be on the east wall, which had not been taken down yet, so he had the opportunity to go to that panel, rub his hand across the name. He stood back for a second, made a fist, and as Marines always do, he pounded that fist right into that name. And that was very moving because someone said something to me over here and I turned, and when I turned back, he was gone, when I turned around, his car was gone. He came for that purpose, and I think that's what the moving wall is all about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one, do we have a young lady that wants to speak? Okay, she's going to pass. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment and move to item three. We have a couple of recognitions I want to do, and I'm going to ask the board to come down there with us to do the recognitions. The first one is Brandon Crawford. This is my buddy Brandon, and we're doing a resolution recognizing him for being picked for the represent the United States in the Special Olympics. So, let me read it, okay? Whereas Brandon Crawford, a Currituck County resident, has been selected to represent the United States in the 2011 Special Olympics World Summer Games in Greece, and whereas Brandon Crawford is one of the five athletes from North Carolina chosen for the national team, whereas in Greece, Brandon will compete against Special Olympians from more than 185 countries, and whereas the 2011 Summer Games will be held from June 25th through July 4th, 2011, and whereas Brandon will compete in bowling, having previously represented Currituck County at the North Carolina Special Olympics competition, and whereas prior to making the trip to Greece, the US team will have the opportunity to meet in San Diego for a training camp from March 28th through April 1st, 2011. So, now therefore, be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners acknowledge the talent, skills, and teamwork of Brandon Crawford and does hereby extend this expression of our pride and wishes him the best in the 2011 Special Olympics, adopted this first day of November, 2010. There you go, Brandon. If you want to say anything, I think Jason is prepared to say something. Well, we'll let Jason talk.
Folks, I'm Jason Weeks, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director of Currituck County. I'd like to speak, say a few words about Brandon. He is the, Brandon is the epitome of the word dedicated. He's a, he's a young man that's been with our Special Olympics program for just over 10 years now. He's a three-time gold medalist, and that's how you have to be, in order to be nominated for this trip and the opportunity, you have to be a gold medalist. And every Special Olympian that receives a gold medal is entered into a drawing. He is actually the first person from eastern North Carolina, east of Raleigh, to ever go and represent the United States. And I was just going to add a few things, he's won a gold medal in bowling in 2009, he's also a two-time gold medal winner in team basketball as well. There are going to be 300 athletes going from the United States, and like I say, he's one of them, he's the first from eastern North Carolina. There's 7,500 athletes that are going to gather in Greece, he's fortunate enough to be making the trip. Brandon's also a part-time employer of ours, so it kind of touches our heart a little bit, and he is the definition of dedicated. There is not a practice, a day goes by where they, we have something going and he's not there, an hour early at that. Brandon's going to be there early for everything, and we appreciate him, I hope you guys do as well, and I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for recognizing me as a special young man. We're glad to have you.
And he's quite a fisherman too.
He's my catfish supplier.
We have another presentation that we want to do for the Boy Scouts, I understand we've got an Eagle Scout amongst us, and if all the Boy Scouts and everybody affiliated with those would come forward, we'll do another presentation.
I'd like to introduce to you Jerry Allen Ball. I had the honor of going last month when he received his Eagle Scout, and that was very rewarding for me to be able to go see that. He's very young and has accomplished much, and so I wanted to give over a couple of things that he's done. His merit badges that he's received, he's gotten archery, art, auto mechanics, basketry, bird study, camping, canoeing, citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, citizenship in the world, climbing, communications, cooking, emergency preparedness, environmental science, family life, fingerprinting, fire safety, first aid, fishing, leather work, lifesaving, mammal study, nature, oceanography, orientate, personal fitness, personal management, pioneering, pottery, railroading, rifle shooting, space exploration, swimming, weather, wilderness survival, and wood carving. Other awards or recognitions, he has gotten kayaking, BSA, and Paul Bunyan Woodsman, and he's a member of the Order of the Arrow. I think he stands out when the motto of the Boy Scouts is, "A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courageous, or excuse me, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent." So, on behalf of the Currituck County Commissioners, we have a resolution recognizing Jerry Allen Ball, whereas the County, whereas the Currituck County Board of Commissioners would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Jerry Allen Ball for having attained the coveted rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Jerry... rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Jerry Allen Ball is one of only 4% of overall Scout membership who have claimed the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Jerry is a member of Scout Troop 169 sponsored by the Moyak Ruining Club. And whereas this is also the accumulation of the patriotic concern and devoted efforts of members of the Adult Scout leaders and caring parents who have worked with Jerry to this end. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners joins with others in the recognition of Jerry Allen Ball for his outstanding accomplishment and wishes him continued success in his life endeavors. Adopted this the first day of Does anybody have anything to add? This is Jerry's father.
It just means a lot to us that Jerry, or any other boys, that go the whole way. It means a lot to us that they achieved and went the whole way, not dropped out. I don't know. It's just touching.
Okay, and that was item three and four. Item five. Tonight must be a resolution night. Resolution proclaiming November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. I believe we had a couple ladies that came and spoke a few meetings ago, and we told you we'd put this on the agenda, and I'm going to read it into the record. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death in both men and women in the United States. Whereas lung cancer takes the lives of more Americans each year than breast, prostate, colon, liver, and kidney cancers combined. Whereas former smokers and people who have never smoked comprise the majority of new lung cases, of new cases of lung cancer each year. Whereas 70% of the new lung cancer cases will be diagnosed in late stage with a 15% five-year survival rate. And whereas early lung cancer diagnosis and management protocols exist, yet have not been embraced as the standard of care. And whereas funding for lung cancer research falls far short of that for other less fatal diseases. And whereas the National Lung Cancer Partnership is a group of leading doctors, researchers, patient advocates, and lung cancer survivors who are working together to improve treatments for lung cancer patients. We are dedicated to raising public awareness of the disease and generating funding for cancer, lung cancer research. Therefore, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners does hereby officially proclaim the month of November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Currituck County. Furthermore, we urge all citizens of our county to do all they can to make lung cancer a national public health priority and offer compassion to people with lung cancer. Adopted this first day of November 2010. So we need a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item six, Presentation on Veterans Administration, Rural Health Initiative. I believe we have someone in the audience. If you'll tell us who you are.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Manager. My name is Kevin Amick, and I am the Rural Health Integrator at the Hampton Veterans Affairs Medical Center in Hampton, Virginia. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight regarding a fairly new program within the VA, the Rural Health Initiative. What we know is that there are obstacles faced by patients in rural areas that are vastly different from those in urban areas. There are economical factors, cultural and social differences. Isolation of living in remote areas present problems such as transportation and lack of recognition by legislatures. Some statistics, there are 306 million people living in the United States. 25% of that population lives in rural areas. Only 10% of providers practice in those same areas. 57 to 90% of first responders in the rural areas are volunteers. 47 million people are uninsured, and of the uninsured, the population in rural areas makes up 23%. Residents in the rural areas are less likely to have usual regular providers, less likely to obtain preventive care, and less likely to obtain needed tests and prescriptions. Little bit of background, the Office of Rural Health was established in 2007. It was mandated by Congress under Public Law 109-461. The purpose was to conduct and disseminate studies of concerns and issues that veterans weren't accounting that lived in rural and highly rural areas. The mission of the Hampton VA Rural Health Team is to expand access and availability of health information to veterans living in rural and highly rural areas. Our outreach goals are to promote resources that are available through health education, social services of both VA and non-VA providers. We want to broaden access to VA health care for veterans. Instead of veterans coming to us, we're coming into the community to find them. We want to assist veterans in all aspects of health benefits enrollment, availability of service, women's health, PTSD, and health education. The health education includes local seminars on preventive health and living healthier lifestyles. We want to expand enrollment of veterans into My Healthy Vet Program, which is an VA award-winning personal health record. We want to reach out to women veterans that are out in those communities as well. In 1988, women represented 4.4% of all veterans. Today, in 2010, that makeup is 14% of the US veteran population. The VA is committed to reaching out to the women veterans to ensure that they know that there are services available to them. This is the catchment area, the colored counties of the Hampton VA Medical Center. That's why we're here tonight. You see there are a list to the right that include what the VA considers rural counties. And these are the counties that we're focusing on. Doesn't mean that we won't hit Chesapeake or Portsmouth or Virginia Beach, but those are not considered rural counties. But this list here is inclusive of the rural counties and the VA catchment area. The Hampton VA Medical Center programs, these are just a list of a few of the programs that we have at our facility. Women's Health, Pharmacy, Primary Care, Community Living Center, Domesticiliary, OEF and OIF Clinic, Suicide Prevention Hotline, Emergency Room, just to mention a few. Outreach partnerships are important to our program. We've done, since May of this year, we have developed an extensive network out in the communities, trying to reach out to veterans and identifying those areas that have pockets of veterans. We're hoping that being here tonight will expand, will provide us an expansion of that network. Fighting homelessness, Secretary Sinseki, VA Secretary, has made it clear that he has a five-year plan to rid of VA homelessness. The VA is committed to that as well. With the increased number of veterans coming back from war with PTSD, couple that with the economic times that we're having, there's just been an increased number of homeless veterans living on the streets. We're trying to locate and assist those veterans out in the areas as well. The Rural Health Team members will help veterans and family members complete the application for health care benefits by completing the 1010 EZ Form in person. This is geared to cut out a lot of the confusion on the application. If you've ever seen the application before, it's a typical government form that is pretty extensive. So when we come out to those areas, we actually sit down with the veterans and their spouses and go through that process and do that as a team. These are just a couple dates of recent past that we've actually been out to your area, out in Edington, Moyak, Columbia, North Carolina. And we actually, Mr. Kohler spoke about it. We actually came out on the closing ceremony for the mobile wall, and it was a fantastic opportunity for my staff to be able to experience that as well. And it was a moving closing ceremony. Of note, down at the bottom, if you would just take note, there is an event coming up on November 9th. It's down in Coin Jock at the American Legion 288. So we'll be rolling our team down here full force, and we have announced that in the local paper, or it should be coming up soon. But once again, we'll return to this area because we're still seeing great turnout from veterans that are just getting word that we're out there. This is the enrollment information, my name, telephone number. And again, we want to thank you for the opportunity and Bob for setting up the opportunity for us to come out here tonight to help us get word out and try to locate some more veterans. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
We appreciate you coming. If anyone has any questions, would you entertain them?
Absolutely.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just have one comment, if I could, because we found, I found out about the meeting they were having in Moyak like a day before. Is there any way that we can get that November 9th meeting on the website? I know it's only, thank goodness, eight days away. But, and then his name and contact and number?
We can do that, and I'll stick around afterwards, and I have some business cards. I do have my public affairs person here with me tonight, too. So again, setting up a network is very important to us. So if at any time you have any recommendations on how, Bob has been great on helping us get word out, kind of pointing us in the right direction, people, but we're always open to try to get the word out for reps.
Real quick, rumor, are you going to bring a health care facility to Lisbon City? Is that under consideration at all?
Did I bring that? I do have, and actually, I knew that was going to get asked tonight. I actually brought the news release.
And it changed it to Currituck.
You said they did change it to, yeah. The actual address, and it's funny because the public affairs gentleman, James Cody, my public affairs guy, we were talking about that on the way down here, and they're getting ready to set up a ribbon-cutting ceremony, but I can't announce that tonight. The address that came out in the press release back in May actually had the address, and it is 1845 West City Drive in Elizabeth City. And that's where the location is supposed to be.
I just know that that's part of the problem is most of the veterans here are older, and transportation and getting back to Hampton is a very, that's a day trip.
Absolutely. And we see that same thing on the eastern shore with traveling across Chesapeake Bay Bridge. And I will just tell you that that's part of what we talked to the veterans about. The VA is committed to attempting to make sure the veterans don't have to travel any more than 50 miles to get health care. When they start looking at where they're going to locate clinics or medical service agreements, they need to see those pockets. So what I've been trying to discuss with the folks that live down around Elizabeth City area is, don't wait until the clinic opens. Enroll now so that they see the numbers. Because if those numbers increase and we don't, and we're not aware of the size, then we're already going to outgrow the facility that we're building. And we're seeing huge numbers. I think since May, we have completed over 350 applications for enrollment into VA health care.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I was at a presentation a couple of weekends ago, and North Carolina's Veterans Service Coordinator said there was approximately 1,500 veterans in Currituck County. Do you have any numbers?
I don't, no, not at this time. I can absolutely get those for you. Go back and we'll have to have the data folks pull that up, but we can, we can get those numbers for you. I could tell you it's large because there are a lot of veterans that are already enrolled. But as I said, just coming out here to this surrounding area, we're, I mean, we're seeing, we come out for about a two and a half hour event at each one of these facilities, and we're seeing 30, 40 people every time we come out.
Thank you, sir.
I have one question.
Sir.
Excuse me. Would you come over to a remote site like Knights Island? We have a gentleman over there. He's a retired commander, and he does his very best to try to work with people when they're having problems concerning the VA and the benefits and that type of stuff. And I can get you in touch with him, or him in touch with you and schedule something.
We're set to come anywhere. We've been out to the Watermelon Festival, the Heritage Festival. We're going to Tangier Island on the eastern shore, so we're, so we'll take a boat if we have to. But we're willing to come anywhere. We just have to strategically plan the event. And if we have to come out more frequently, because it takes us a while to get down here and get set up, then we'll do that as well.
I'm sure he can get the word out pretty quick over there to where anyone that's interested will be there.
Yes, sir.
Take my day. Thank you.
Anything else?
I just have one follow-up, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
November 9th, what time are you going to be there?
We got 11:30. 11:30 to 2:00.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Yes, sir, Mr. Kohler?
We're also trying to make arrangements to have these gentlemen come back to the lower part of the county, somewhere down in Jarvisburg. That will be right after the first of the year. We don't work, I'm working with their schedule. So we'll have it noted for down there. Again, trying to get it to the veterans, because Currituck County has 3,000 veterans, believe it or not. Tarrack County has 4,000. We try, we try to get this community-based clinic here this way rather than way over Elizabeth City, but politics got involved and that's where it went. So one of the things that he's saying is that we need to get these people registered so they'll be going to that clinic rather than up to Hampton. That'll cut off quite a bit of time. Won't be an all-day trip, but it'll be a half-day trip.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item seven, Approval of YMCA Construction Contract for the Community Center. Mr. McCree?
Mr. Chairman, as we know, the Community Center project is a joint effort between the YMCA and the county and its resources. You have before you the actual contract to provide for the construction of the Community Center in the amount of $11,897,247. I have gone through the contract. I've made modifications to supplemental conditions that are more beneficial to the county as owner of the facility, and it's commended to you for your approval tonight.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. McCree or the contract? Standard boilerplate construction contract?
Yes, it is. Now, I want to make clear also that that is the, that's the amount of construction for the Community Center building itself and the site work for that building. The total project is expected to approach approximately $13.5 million, but that's with the county doing some additional infrastructure improvements, not only to benefit that facility, but for other future projects and development of that property.
And the paying for it has been taken care of?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
A motion for approval?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item eight is Approval of Amendment to YMCA Lease Agreement. I believe, Mr. McCree, that one's yours as well.
Yes, we have, I guess, five minor amendments to the lease agreement that was actually entered into between the county and the YMCA about one year ago, November 5th, at your first meeting of November last year. Of course, since that time, the project has become more clarified with regard to detail of the amount that it's going to cost you just to approve the construction, as well as the amount of space that the YMCA will be utilizing. In addition, we also made some modification in what was contemplated at first. A year ago, we were contemplating the YMCA would actually be the construction manager of the project. We sensitive changed that because... We sensitive changed that, because the county obviously is the owner of the property and the facility, and so what I'm about to tell you will be an amendment to the lease agreement that makes that clear, that the YMCA, while it will be overseeing some of the construction activity for the county, as ultimately the county is the owner, that will have the ultimate responsibility for the project as it moves toward its completion. So with that, the first amendment to the proposed, to the current lease would be to modify one of the recitals which provided for the county to invest up to $12 million for the project. Of course, the construction of the building is expected to be slightly less than $12 million, but this is to make clear that that $12 million amount excludes the additional site work that I just mentioned, which is expected to raise the project total on that property to $13.5 million. The second proposed amendment, again, specifically provides for what we now know to be the actual amount of square footage that the YMCA will be utilizing, 74,704 square feet. The third amendment is several paragraphs which, again, represent the modification in what we had planned on or talked about doing a year ago, with the county now stepping into its full and proper role as owner and ultimate oversight and responsibility for the project, although it does make some provision for the YMCA to act as representative for the county with regard to construction of the facility as we had originally agreed. The next, number four amendment, is again, to make clear that rather than the YMCA as less C being responsible for the construction, that the YMCA will ascertain and ensure that the contractor constructs the facility in accordance with the plans and the agreements entered into between the county, the YMCA, and the contractor. The fifth and final proposed amendment, again, reflects this change in the county stepping forward in its role as owner of the facility, and makes some modifications to insurance language that appeared in the lease originally, and that will provide for the county to ensure that the proper insurance is in place during the course of construction, although the construction contract now provides for the contractor to pay for and provide all builder's risk insurance during the course of construction. Again, I've reviewed this and I commend it, recommend to you its approval.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. McCree?
Chairman, I have an approval.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9 is Recommendation of Bid Award for Parallel Taxway, Currituck Airport. Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Chairman, we're bringing to you tonight for your consideration the bid opening for a project that we've been working on for a little time now. It's the North End Parallel Taxway. We've got a graphic, you can see the, on the screen here, we're showing you the design and layout for the project. You'll notice the area in green. If the board approves the contract tonight, the constructor, the contractor will mobilize right after the Thanksgiving holidays, and will immediately commence building the green portion of the project. It's anticipated that that will take through March. After that, they will mobilize and do the two red areas. It will require us to shut our airport down for a period of probably three weeks for them to make the tie-ins, and they hope to complete that in April. The last piece being the piece in blue, which will do in May. So the project term of this project would begin in November and end in May of 2011. We did bid out the project. We had three bidders in your agenda package tonight. You see where, it's the staff's recommendation and the engineers' recommendation that we award the low bid to RPC Contracting. They came in with a low bid of just a tick over $1.5 million. I also put at your place is a handout, so you could see the overall project, the entire project is a little under $2 million, coming in at $1.9 million. The rest of the project has already been approved. Tonight, what we're bringing to you is approval for the $1,544,960 of the paving project. This project is being funded by federal grant money. We've been accumulating these grants over a period of several years now. It is 90% federal grant to 10% local match, so we've got about $200,000 invested in a $2 million project. Our funds have already been set aside and allocated for the project, so we're not asking for any allocation tonight. We are asking approval of the bid. One other thing that is a little unusual about this bid, if you look at the handout, the Division of Aviation feels very strongly about the Currituck County Regional Airport and of its position in the future to northeastern North Carolina, to the point where they came forward and have pledged whatever shortfalls we have on this project, they've pledged to meet. You'll notice right in the middle of the handout we gave you, that we were $76,000 short of federal grant money to complete the project, and we have a letter in hand from the state of North Carolina where they're guaranteeing that shortfall. In fact, they've pledged a little bit of extra money to that, that if we're fortunate enough, we're asking now to have the, to be able to take the excess money and go ahead and finish the security fencing around the north end as part of this project, too. But they are showing a commitment to, and they see the value long-term of our airport. So tonight, what we're asking for is approval of the contract, RPC Contracting, in the amount of approximately $1.5 million. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have a question, Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Scanlon, do you know where the state money comes from?
It's actually federal money that flows to the state.
And it comes off airline ticket taxes and things like that?
Yes, sir.
It's not general fund monies?
No, sir. It flows to, it's federal money that goes to the state, goes to DOT, they give it to Division of Aviation, and they have a formula where they allocate it back out to the regional entity, but it's actually federal monies.
I know there's a lot of question about money being diverted out of the general fund of North Carolina for projects like this, and I want to make it clear that there's no general fund monies in this.
There's not. There's not.
Thank you.
There is a diversion. There is a diversion. Mr. Bill Owens spoke at the Alabama Oral Commission meeting last week, and one of the things he is diverting is because the Elizabeth City Airport is getting overfilled, that the, he and Mark Bassnight are sending that business to the Currituck Regional Airport. They're trying to keep that business in the northeast part of the state instead of it going somewhere else. And Representative Owens and Senator Bassnight are both very, very intent on doing all they can to help us with this overflow, because it's my understanding that the facility in Elizabeth City now is really inundated with more than what they can handle. And that was the report he gave us at the Alabama Oral Commission meeting.
Thank you.
I'd like to get Mr. Scanlon to reiterate discussion we had today. You commented on the appearance of this airport to the Department of Aviation, what their long-term vision was.
Well, they certainly have told us on several times we've met with them, that they feel like specifically, and especially with the coming Mid-Currituck Bridge, that this is going to be a vital link to the northeastern North Carolina as a transportation quarter. They see the activity increasing at our airport, and they have pledged funding to support that increase. They've called it a diamond in the rough, I think was the phrase they used when they talked to us, and they're very supportive of our airport and its future growth. They also talked about when this project is complete, that once the Mid-Currituck Bridge permitting is in place, that they're going to move diligently to start locating the funding to do the south parallel and to expedite and extend the calendar period where we will go and get that underway also. But they're very much committed to our airport.
Anyone else hearing none, who need a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Motion for approval?
Correct.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 is Consent Agenda.
Move for approval.
A motion?
I have one question on the consent. Let's see.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Item number three, Mr. Scanlon, would you let the public know what that's about?
Yes, sir. You're referring to a request by the Finance Department to dispose of certain financial records.
Yes.
In your agenda package, you actually have a listing of what these records are. The state of North Carolina, specifically through the Department of Cultural Resources, establishes a record disposition schedule for all the paper that all of our departments handles, and based on that schedule, at certain dates and times, we can bring back to this Board of Commissioners a request of approval for a disposal of the records. What you have in front of you tonight, if you look at the financial records, these are all supporting documents. These are not primary documents. It is journal records, it's deposit slips, budget amendments, journal vouchers, those kinds of supporting documentation. The state record for these particular types of records is we've got to retain them for three years before we can dispose. So you see on your agenda package, these are documents that extend back to the year 2004 and 2007. The primary documents, the core financial documents that these documents support can never be destroyed. So our audits and some of our key, we have to hold those into perpetuity, but these are supporting documents, and we've got to bring to the Board of Commissioners a schedule so that we have a documentation of those records being destroyed. And we do this periodically with all the records. We'd be overwhelmed with paperwork if we didn't somehow, at some point in time, have an opportunity to dispose of them.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners report. Ms. Taylor?
I just wanted to thank Mary and Gilbert and her volunteers. The road does, the highway does look much better.
Yeah.
I'm very disappointed in the state.
Yeah.
Because we paid tax dollars to have that kept up, but I do appreciate the time, and I would have stayed, I apologize, but I was on my way to work, so. But also, then tomorrow, urge everybody, if you have not gotten out to the early voting, that you do need to take the opportunity tomorrow to vote. It's your voice, and wish everybody luck tomorrow.
All right, Mr. Nelms?
I wish everybody to please go out and vote. I would like to mention one thing. One of the things that I've realized in my two years on the Alabama Oral Commission and my two years as the chairman and representative of Region R, is that we have two representatives, state representative and a senator, that have looked out for the entire 20 counties on the east of North Carolina. Nobody east of I-95 gets a representation like we get, and Dare County and Currituck County are especially benefited from this. The other eight counties in our region have not financially fared so well. And when Wake County and Mecklenburg County can outvote all 20 counties on the east coast anytime they want to, that is grave concern for me. And I solicit everybody to think about that when you go to vote tomorrow, that we've had two representatives that have looked out, not just for Currituck and Dare County, but all 20 counties on the east coast. And if those two individuals are removed, the entire east coast of North Carolina is going to be subjected to the votes of Mecklenburg and Wake County. Thank you.
Mr. Royal?
I'd just like to reiterate once more about the progress made at the airport. We have a new airport manager, a young man named Jim Elliott. I think we've done an excellent job, very experienced. We have several projects underway. The Airport Advisory Board has done a great job of organizing and prioritizing the things that need to happen out there. The county manager is providing a regular list of those projects and what progress is being made, and we're looking forward to this becoming a really first-class operation out there. It's wonderful now. Those of you that haven't been out to see it ought to come out and visit. Come out and go for an airplane ride, I'm sure there'll be somebody to take you. And just, it's your facility, you need to come out and enjoy it, make use of it, and tell your friends about it, too.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Idlet?
Yes, as everyone probably knows, we lost a very well-respected man in Currituck County last week, Mr. Bob Kuntz. If it's without any objection to this board, what I would like to do is ask the Recreation Board to look into some type of a memorialization award of some kind, whether it would be a sportsmanship award that would go to a child, or whatever, for the future. So if no one has any objections, I'm going to take that to them.
I think that's appropriate.
Okay.
Mr. Etheridge?
Just like the other ones have said, tomorrow is Election Day. I hope everyone will go out and vote, and I'd like to personally thank everybody who put their name on the dotted line, because what they're about to undertake is unselfish service to the citizens that elected them. So I appreciate everyone who runs for office, and good luck to everyone tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Gregglin?
Mr. Chairman, that's all I say. I would just encourage people to be sure and vote tomorrow. There's some good folks running in that election tomorrow. Just encourage people to vote.
You know any of them?
I know a few of them.
Yes, sir.
We have four young ladies from Knights Island that plays on the 12 and under Virginia Beach Recreation Softball team. They had their championships this weekend.
He's bragging.
Well, and we won. We won, won 3 to 2 on Saturday and 8 to 6 yesterday. And yes, I'm bragging, my granddaughter pitched complete games in both games and won, so. But all the kids played well, and it was just amazing to see how they come together. They were the third-place team, the team that they beat yesterday for the championship had only lost one game the whole season. So they are the 12 and under rec ball champs in Virginia Beach. So we're mighty proud of them.
I have a brief update. As you know, the United States Postal Service is contemplating closing the post office here at Currituck, 27929 zip code. I spoke with Bradley Ryan and Congressman Jones' office, and they are searching it down, and they're going to see what they can do to find out what the problem is and resolve it. And I expect to be hearing from him in the next few days. I told, I plowed to him that closing that post office is not an acceptable avenue if there's another building that could be used to house the post office, if they cannot reach an agreement on the property owner with the lease agreement. I think that's what it's about, is it's time for the renewal of the lease. If they don't reach agreement, I think November 30th is the last day that post office will operate. So if you live in the 27929 zip code, you may want to contact your congressman's office, Walter B. Jones, your U.S. Senator, Richard Burr, and Kay Hagan, and let them know that it's very important to keep that post office open in the county seat. And hopefully, we'll have a report back here in the next few days that Dan will be able to share with, or the manager will be able to share with the rest of the board. The last thing I would say is, there's a lot of elections tomorrow. I would like to point out that the commissioners that serve on this board and the challengers conducted themselves very cordial and
Professional.
Professional, and I commend the challengers and the current commissioners for the way they conducted themselves. I know it's an anxious night tonight, so I won't go on, and you need to go home and get good night's rest, everybody that's running. And Mr. Scanlon, do you have anything to report?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Chairman, let me just say something about that post office that you spoke about. I'm glad you did.
Sure.
I had that right on my mind, too, but I've had several people contact me on that. There's really a lot of people in this area that use this post office, and it's just a shame if we lose the post office right here at our county seat.
Yeah.
We need to do everything we can to maintain and keep this post office.
And it is a federal issue. You need to contact your federal representatives about your post office.
Dan, do we have any vacant space anywhere we could lease to them?
It's certainly something we can talk about as they progress through the negotiations.
As a matter of fact, I would like for us to adopt a resolution tonight, or a letter, and send to our federal representatives about the post office, without objection.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to include the postmaster for the section. I guess they're dealing through the section and rocking out, are they not?
I believe so, yes.
He needs to be written to, too, from the people, so he's got a good understanding of what's going on here.
But it's like I told you at the OLF, you don't just send it to the bureaucrat, you've got to send it to the representative that oversees that bureaucrat, because the person at the post office is not going to correspond with you. But those elected officials are going to see that some correspondence happened, so whatever you do, make sure you send it to everyone. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Some move. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.